Quarter at 6:30 p.m. President, President John Wilson, Councilman Charbonneau, Councilman Vashon, Councilman Curtis, City Clerk and Treasurer James Johnson, Comptroller Programs Director Bectarian. Mr. Brineer is here, members of the Treasury's Department are here, any other Department heads here? So, I thought it would be a nice gesture to read the following poem to begin our council meeting that was shared with the mayor by Councilmember Clark. It's called "The Dash" by Linda Ellis. "I read of a man who stood to speak at the funeral of a friend. He referred to the dates on the tombstone from the beginning to the end. He noted the first came the date of birth and spoke the following date with tears. But he said what mattered most of all was the dash between those years, for that dash represents all the time that they spent alive on earth. And now, only those who love them know what that little line is worth, for it matters not how much we own, the cars, the house, the cash. What matters is how we live and love and how we spend our dash. So, think about this long and hard. Are there things you'd like to change? For you never know how much time is left that can still be rearranged if we could just slow down enough to consider what's true and real and always try to understand the way other people feel and be less quick to anger and show appreciation more and love the people in our lives like we've never loved before. If we treat each other with respect and more often wear a smile, remembering this special dash might only last a little while. So when your eulogy is being read with your life's actions to rehash, would you be proud of the things they say about how you spent your dash?" So I'd like to thank the Councilman Curtis for sharing that with me. And Newport, let's be proud of what we say. Let's remain united to bring Newport forward into 2024, not only economically, but as respectful, welcoming, and proud citizens and government leaders that we are. And thank you for allowing us to share this with you. Next item, additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. President Wilson?
None.
Councilman Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilman Vashon?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson? I do, we will be number 10. I would like to make a motion to delete item number 10, restorative justice presentation. Lynn Glat, Ms. Glat is not going to be able to be here today. May I have a motion to delete restorative justice presentation Lynn Glat, number 10?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Pardon me. Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of January 22, 2024, and January 29, 23, 2024, and January 29, 2024. May I have a motion, please, to, yes, three individual motions. First, to approve the minutes for January 22, 2024?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments? This is on the 22nd. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. May I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes for January 23, 2024?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? This is for the 23rd. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes for January 29, 2024?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments for the 29th? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Second? The next item on the agenda is response to Pederson Open Meeting Law Violation Allegation dated January 26, 2024. May I have a motion to find that premature public general knowledge of the confidential attorney-client communications made for providing legal services to the city council would place the city at a substantial disadvantage because disclosure of the otherwise confidential advice and communication would harm the city by waiving the city's attorney-client privilege one VSA Section 313A1F.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, motion is carried. May I please have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications with the city attorney for the purpose of providing professional legal services and invite the city attorneys and the comptroller into the executive session pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313A1F?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, the motion is carried, and we are in executive session. Motion? May I have a motion that the council deny the allegations of an open meeting law violation brought by Ms. Pederson dated January 26, 2024?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comment? Discussion back to the council. I would like to recognize Counselor Root.
Yes, City Attorney David Root from Stifel Page and Pletcher. We, the allegation, we count, we recommend the council deny the allegation, and the council should deny the allegation because there is no prohibition, and in fact, the open meeting law allows items to be added or deleted from the agenda as the first act of business at the meeting. The statute doesn't specify between regular or special meetings, so any meeting items can be added to the agenda. And further, the statute does not say that there needs to be urgency, an emergency, necessity, or some other extraordinary or exigent circumstance to justify adding something to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. That's when the open meeting law says it may be done, and that's what council did at its meeting on January 15th with respect to recognizing the Martin Luther King Day holiday.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is recording employees' policy. May I please have a motion to discuss, to discuss recording employees?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before we go into any discussion, does anybody, yes, ma'am?
Hi, Lori Brown, Newport City. Can you just explain what this is?
Yes.
When I come back.
Yeah.
I would like to comment, but I'd like to hear the discussion before I comment.
Right, right.
Comment after you guys discuss?
Yes, I just wanted to follow the step, make sure that everybody is same. Okay. So, I'm actually pleased to see a revitalization of the council, and I'm actually pleased to see this new civility going on, much less bickering, more discussion. The council, we as a council represent the citizens, and you deserve our trust. There are going to be disagreements and discussions, that's what it should be about. It's okay to have split votes, in fact, that's healthy. There have been thanks for recognized transparency, we have had sharing of public on issues, and we're not, we listen to what you're saying, and we're trying to get back to you on issues that are brought up. But as, you know, speaking now to recording meetings, it came to my attention that during a prior, after prior leadership had shifted, that there were some discussions regarding the taping of city employees at meetings, and more specifically, how to avoid having those recordings be included in public records requests. In that communication, it was also stated, when the people spoke about recording meetings, it would be better to pick up a small inexpensive recorder instead of using the phone. That way, if ever there was a public records request or a legal action was taken, that someone would just get the recorder and not the personal phone. So, seriously, we would like to not have people tape our city staff discussions unless under appropriate situations with all in the know and consenting and in accordance with city policy, and we'd like to leave the decision-making as to best practices of taping to discussions with our licensed city attorneys. So, I would like, at this point, and I am, this is where we're going to go back, okay, to have a motion, please, to direct the city attorneys to research and draft a policy on when recording of city staff discussions is allowed or prohibited for the council to consider. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay, comment. May I start with?
No, it's okay.
You're okay? Ms. Beerling?
Um. I'm finding this whole situation curious.
Would you mind standing so that you can?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Beerling. I'm a resident of Newport. So I'm finding this whole situation curious in terms of the way that it's being brought up. And, I mean, clearly, we've only had one change in leadership in probably over a decade, right? So, we all know that we're dealing with a discussion about Paul Manette versus Beth Barnes. And these are serious allegations that are being levied, and yet, we're not hearing from the person herself as to, you know, what exactly took place. I'm also in possession of an email from her brother to her, and the brother is giving her advice to do this. So, you know, I really don't know where the truth lies. This is the same individual that made a whole lot of allegations against the city council for harassment and bullying and spewed it to the press, and then, you know, scheduled this, this gala event down at Palmelo Park and was supposed to disclose what exactly had happened to her, and then at the last minute, pulled the plug and didn't do that. And to date, we've never heard any concrete evidence of what actually took place, and to my knowledge, she also has not pursued any type of legal remedy. I also am in receipt of emails from Beth where, after the Palmelo Park incident, she wanted to find out if she could, you know, withdraw her resignation. And of course, nothing had changed at that point. I did not advise her one way or the other, but at the end of the day, that was her request. So, I just, I just don't, I'm not comfortable with any of this and the way it's being brought up, and I really can't help but wonder if it's just an attempt to harm somebody's reputation, specifically, you know, Paul Manette. You know, is, I also know that, you know, as a res, as a person on this planet in Vermont, it's a one-party recording state, so if I am part of a conversation, I can record it. So, it's just, none of this, none of this is passing the sniff test for me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thank you for your comment, but I am actually going to say something here because you have just had.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to hear.
So that is not the reason, or this is not Mr. Manette.
Okay.
Okay. Or the former mayor.
Okay.
Okay. And so, this is a different situation, different communications, and that is why we need a policy, because in all due respect to the employees, there shouldn't be that, you know, recording without, unless it's appropriate, under specific guidelines with best practices. So that is the purpose of this.
Okay.
Okay? And so, and I, I'm going to, usually, I'm going to say, thank you for your comment, but on this, I want to make sure everybody understands. This was an entirely different communication scenario. Whoever the parties are, it doesn't matter, the bottom line is, we need to put this in perspective and clean up policies, and that's what we're doing. Yes.
I'm totally confused. It almost sounds as if we're not going to be recording city council meetings anymore, which seems really strange. So, could you give me, like, just an example, not referring to whatever the situation is, because I understand you might want to keep that confidential, but give me a situation in which there might be a problem recording, or a real situation, recording employees?
And I am going to be a little bit more open here, if you don't mind. So, if there's a city staff meeting going on, and somebody comes in, maybe, well, I can't use you, maybe me, okay? Maybe I come in, I'm not going to plot down a tape recorder and not let anybody see it and start recording, or come up with some reason for it, and if there is not to record, you know, back and forth goes on. So I would like to have a nice, clean policy for the city. We know what the state law is, and we just need to be sure that people can have their base, it's, this is a city employee policy, okay? This is not for the general public, this is for the city employees who are not as sophisticated with, you know, how to research the law, and they shouldn't be. So that's why I want the city attorneys to look into this and make sure they are, we're following the public records requests. You know, we don't want communications that, well, it could be a good idea, best practice, we want the attorneys to make that decision, we don't want city employees being told, hey, if you do this, they can't get your recording. That's not the purpose of the public records request. So I just want to make sure all the intent is proper, that the policy is in place, and nobody feels threatened that they can't have their city meetings, okay? So they understand what's going on. And it could be that, based on the policy that's put forward, that it says, hey, on this type of meeting, it's fine, but that's what I want. I want the attorneys to research it, I want to put together a nice, clean policy so that we understand what we're looking to. Yes.
Ma'am, I'd like things to be perfectly clear, it's a little, it's a little muddy. So, is there going to be language that this does not preclude people coming to a public meeting and recording? I mean, the press is still, you know, the press is public, the press is just public. So does that mean I can't come in, the young lady from Chronicle can't come in? Yeah, any KTV?
That's not the purpose of this. It's really specifically for, you know, city managers there with employees, and they're having a meeting, and nobody's going to be secretly recording somebody. We're going to have nice, nice, clean meetings. There's not going to be, that's why we want the attorneys to research it, there's not going to be any violations, unless I can figure out how to stop you from it. No, just kidding.
What about, what about council members, ma'am and ma'am, because if you have, if you have three, I think it's what, three members of the council, then you have a quorum, then it's an open meeting.
Correct, correct. And that's why, that will all be clear. So this is pretty much, I don't want to be able to, I don't want to walk in and sit there with a tape recorder or some other type of device where nobody understands that I'm not recording, and if I do want to record, everybody understands the policy, and they have the right to say, this is not in accordance with our policy, and they can question it.
Has that happened? Has that been an issue?
It's been.
How did, how did this come up?
There was some communications going on, so that's.
Communication between whom?
Pete.
I'm sorry?
I can tell you who it wasn't between, it was not between Paul Manette and Beth Barnes.
So, it sounds to me as though this is going to be specific to internal employees, is that accurate?
Yes, correct.
And then, the only other concern that I would have would be disciplinary-type conversations, and I'm sure the attorneys will flesh that out, but it would seem to be that a person who is in a disciplinary conversation should have the right to record.
Exactly, and all of those will be addressed. And remember, nothing is getting passed, it's just opening this up for something that I believe shouldn't be haphazard, and we should have a little bit more thought and understanding of what the rules are. And at the end of the day, it may turn out that no policy is being placed, but at least it should be looked at.
I'll ask the question. So I'm assuming that the definition of the word "recording" here is audio? Is that what we're, is that really basically what we're talking about, having some sort of audio?
Like a tape recorder.
Like a tape recorder or even a cell phone recording, some sort of recording device to record voices?
Right, and iPods can do it, so, you know, pretty much, we want the appropriate disclosure, best practices in place with the guidance of our city attorneys researching the law without violating any other rights.
Okay.
But also, just not to have business going on where people are afraid to have their business meetings.
Okay. Would that also include any type of telephone conversations between city employees and somebody recording a conversation on the phone?
That's what the attorneys are going to look at, and they'll, you know, look at it and see how far we need to go without violating any other, right? This is a complicated area. It is. Okay, it's really a complicated area, and so, we want to try and get the best practices in, and as I said, it may turn out that we come up with, we shouldn't do a policy, but I'm thinking we probably should.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, yes.
Would we get a chance to review this before we take a vote on a policy?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So the question is just to have them explore and research it?
Right, for them to research it and draft a policy for them us to look at and discuss and see what, you know, where we want to go from there. Okay, it's just trying to get more of our best practices in place.
Right.
Okay, and if there's ever an issue, it can be addressed again, and it can be dealt with and changed.
I was just curious, because there are questions on it, and if people can look at the policy before, or if it comes up again on the agenda, they'll have some background. So as long as it's, you know, having them research it, put together a policy, and draft it to get it out, so people can review it, and then?
Yeah, and to your point, Councilman, this is complex, so there will be a lot of discussion on this, it will not just be, okay, they drafted it, it's fine, okay?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I have a motion and a second. No, I'm sorry.
Did we vote on the motion for discussion?
Yes. And then we voted, and then we did that, and then we came back, and we did the motion to direct the city attorneys to research and draft a policy. Let me do that one again, I'll do it again.
I just kind of sort of thought of it on that discussion part.
Sure, let me do this. Okay, so, repeat. May I have a motion to direct the city attorneys to research and draft a policy on when recording of city staff discussions is allowed or prohibited for the council to consider?
I think my notes are wrong, except John making the first and Clark making the second on that one.
Right, so I just wanted to do it again, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I have the motion, and I have the second. Last shot, I'm going to break the rules, last shot. Anyone else? Good? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
So, did you just vote again on what you already voted on?
Well, we, no, we voted this time. I had made the motion in the second, and then there was just clarification on whether it was a discussion motion or was this motion, and now we are actually vote, we voted on the motion to direct the city attorneys to go ahead and do the research.
Okay.
You okay?
Yeah.
You sure?
I'm fine.
I could do it a third time. Wait till we get down later, and you can then say, don't do that one, it's like, okay, can I? The next item on the agenda is email retention policy. May I have a motion to open discussion on email and related document retention?
So?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments, or may I just read my statement first, or I will do it however you all?
Can we do it reversed?
You want to go first?
No, no, no. The thing is, you guys, like, start giving us an idea of what's happening.
Right, that's what I just asked, is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, so, during, during the last full week of January, we learned as a result of a Public Records Act request that former mayor Paul Manette deleted emails from the city's email system at a point in time around the conclusion of his time in office. While an unknown number of emails were deleted and are now unrecoverable, former mayor Manette retained hundreds of emails pertaining to important city business, including relating to an ongoing litigation and other matters. Per our request, former mayor Manette promptly returned the emails to the city that he saved, and we appreciate former mayor Manette's cooperation in that regard. In response to at least two different Public Records Act requests, our city attorneys are currently reviewing the emails that the former mayor retained, as well as other potentially responsive records, for example, material. The city will be making those records available as they are able to complete that work in accordance with the Public Records, Recis Act. Unsurprisingly, it Unsurprisingly, it takes a substantial amount of time and city resources to review over a thousand emails that are potentially responsive now to the pending records requests, including the former mayor's emails, but we want to reiterate that the city takes its obligations under the Public Records Act seriously. Significantly, it is not apparent at this time whether any applicable records retention policies were violated, and while some members of the public have raised questions about liability, we will not be addressing those concerns because we believe that other authorities would be tasked with evaluating those questions, not the city. Further, as a result of these events, I have directed our city attorneys to prepare a city-specific records retention policy that will be presented to and reviewed by council prior to its adoption in the coming weeks. And that is what we're talking about here. Finally, in light of the number of concerns we have regarding these events, we have moved this evening's public comments period to the end of the agenda so the council can get through a number of business items prior to hearing from our constituents during what we anticipate may be a lengthy comment period. And as always, I appreciate your cooperation and civility in that regard, and I thank you. So right now, the reason for this discussion is because we are following the Secretary of State's retention policy, and I believe when, after, you know, situations happen, it's time for us to put a policy in place for the city itself to consider on email retention policies. Comments?
Now, Donna Constanter on Newport. I've worked in a lot of different jobs, and there has never been a time that the email that I generated in my job was not the product of my work. And it's very hard for me to conceive that there would be a municipality where email would just disappear, particularly when someone else is coming in and they might need that. And from what I read in the paper about this, it was encouraged and colluded upon, it appears, by the ex-city manager, saying, oh, that's good, yeah, get rid of them. And so I'm just kind of personally appalled, and I just don't understand that there is a policy in place when, anytime I've ever worked in a place, anything I created through email, as in my capacity in my job, was the product of the organization and not my personal product.
Thank you for your comment. I'm just going to reiterate one more thing. I just, because this is another area that's complex, different states have different rules, and as I said, when the city does not have a policy in place, we default to the Secretary of State's policy, and that's what we must abide by, and that is now why we are going to be putting together a policy for the city to make it more clear. That's our discussion, but I just wanted to clarify, so it's not that the city didn't have a policy, it, we, they defaulted, they didn't have their own city policy, so they defaulted to the Secretary of State's policy. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, ma'am.
Do you want us to make comments now, or are you asking us to...
Well, we can comment on this, and then, if that's the discussion, and then, you know, we can vote to comments later, if needed.
Okay.
Are you going to vote to discuss this? You haven't voted?
No, I, I want them to do this little discussion to get this out, because, you know, then we're going to vote to have, to come back here. We had the actual, open for discussion, we did that?
We never voted on it.
No, because we did a motion in seconds, so they get to speak, and then we come back to us.
Okay, I, I wanted to make a couple of points about this. Some, some people thought it was really important whether or not these emails were deleted or purged before he left office or after, but independent of that, you know, when Jim, for instance, said there wasn't enough room in the vault a couple of years ago to store all the documents that needed to be in the vault, and we all agreed that a bigger vault could be built if it was permissible to simply put the documents somewhere else, the extra documents that were beginning to fill up. He could have called ex-mayors, ex-councilmen, and, or he could have called me and asked me, could you put some of these documents in your basement, or in your attic, or in your garage, and can we store them there for 10 months? And the reason Jim wouldn't do that is because he understands that keeping those records in a secure place, in the custody of someone who is in control of those records, is really important. And for whatever reason, however de minimis I believe the reason given by our ex-mayor Minette was for why he did this, and why the comment from our city manager, who said that was a smart move, did this, to take city emails that are in city custody and put them on your own private computer, and when you are going to be in the next day, at least, or already are, a private citizen, is totally absurd, and it, it messes with our reputation. And I think that from now on, when people come with records requests, or subpoena our records, or they're needed in discovery, that we now have to give them a disclaimer about those records. This involves, you're asking for something that we lost custody of because someone put it on their own personal computer, probably for, according to you guys, it just came back, so 10 months sitting on somebody's computer, when things could have been deleted from it, they could have been modified from it, and so we, the city, cannot certify any longer that these records have been kept in the normal course of business, and we can't certify that they're accurate anymore. And for anyone to suggest, and some of the public has suggested that this was appropriate, is unbelievable in my mind. And in addition, when I looked at Laura Dolgan's response after Smart Move, she said she thought it was such a great idea, she deleted, she intended to delete the emails of some of the people that were leaving office. So I'd like to know, in addition, how many of Melissa Pedersen's emails were deleted or are missing? And I would also like to know, when Laura Dolgan, who thought this was such a smart move, left in the end of May, how many of her emails were deleted? But this gives our city a bad rep when other people come to us and say, can we have those records? And we have to say to them, well, you can have some of them, but I don't know now whether we've got them all, or anybody's been modifying them, and that's why Jim never said to me, please take some files so we don't have to build on to that vault, because even though he knows I'm a pretty trustworthy person, and I prob, I, I certainly wouldn't do anything to those records, he can't certify that to the general public, that he knows me, and therefore I wouldn't do anything. I'm, I'm really appalled. I'm, I, I mean, I know that Jim understands what he needs to do with records, but some people lost the plot here, and I'd also like to know who was in control of these once Laura left and didn't know about this.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Looks like Councilwoman.
Councilman? I don't think we can't hear you.
Right, Mayor, I, I just wanted to raise a point of order. It is your meeting, however, we're talking about records retention policies at this time, and I believe that's the matter that we're discussing, and anything about emails having been destroyed is, should wait till later in the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. So if we can focus tighter here, so we can come back and we can make a decision on the policy, we're going to come back to it at common time, and is this going to be...
This is actually about the intent of the policy. So...
Easy, Mike, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. Jennifer Bierling, resident, Newport, Vermont. My concern is that it's too limited in scope. I mean, you're looking at it just through the lenses of emails, but it's today's world, and we all know that a lot happens on text, we all know that a lot happens on Facebook, instant message, Twitter, et cetera, and those, if it's conducting city business, are all part of city business, and more often than not, those things are happening on personal devices. So, I mean, this is an ongoing issue. There was, I can't remember the name of the, the case now, but there was a case where the state of Vermont had to produce, like, thousands and thousands of emails on personal devices. I, I mean, it happens. It, it, it's the way of the world, and so if you're going to be looking at setting a policy that is analyzing, you know, when it's appropriate, when it's not appropriate to have things on personal devices, looking at just emails is way too limited in scope. You've got to bring all the other types of, of personal device communications into the, into the net.
Thank you for that comment. And when we get to the actual motion for, to have the attorneys do the review, it gets bigger than that. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I have a comment to add to what's been said without being repetitive. One of the lines in the original email that was particularly disturbing to me was the one about the emails were relocated, for want of a better word, because of ongoing litigation. What are the implications of that for the litigants, for those who are expecting to have access to that email? What does that mean in terms of the city, who have responsibility in whatever this case is? What does that mean in terms of the person who is on the other end of whatever that lawsuit is? That's pretty serious. And I'm also really concerned at the comment about some emails were put into Word documents. Well, the only way to do that, my understanding, is to cut and paste. If you cut and paste an email message, it gives you the capacity to change that message. How do we know if that did or didn't happen? Do we know that? Of course we don't.
Thank you for your comment. Did, you already spoke to this, did you not?
Yes, but I have a response to that.
You can talk at the comment time, because we don't do discussion back and forth. Okay, so I want to bring it back here. So the point of this is that we, it's my belief, and I'm hoping that's the council's belief as well, that we need to have our attorneys look at this and take us away from just the default to the Secretary of State's, just, you know, the default of what they have there on their retention policy. And we need to be more specific as to the city's retention policy on records retention, regardless of where the attorneys decide to draft this policy. And so, comments, talk, you want to talk to me now?
I'm sure he was, he's going to cover it, but would encompass when there's a change in the person, so, change in city manager, change in mayor, is there, who's in charge of those while that transition happens, that kind of thing? I assume he would cover that.
Yeah, so we, that would be part of, you know, this is another complex policy, and so when we came in and when there were changes, you know, we brought our IT person in to make sure that it was frozen, nobody could get into any of the computer systems or the email accounts, that passwords were changed, only the IET person and one other person, if necessary, could do that. We took appropriate, you know, looks at the documentation, made sure if things were frozen, to see if anything was deleted or whatever. And so we took that precaution, and we will continue to do that until the policy is in place. We met with the staff and told them that they, nothing should be deleted at all, but we need a policy that has an attorney's eyes on it. And we don't want to just go in there and say, you know, rule of thumb, this is what we should have. We really need legal advice on this one, because there are so many innuendos and circumstances, and some of them we heard here, so I don't think it's, it's something that management should put together. I think we really do need our attorneys to research this, because we don't want to be an issue of liability. We want to make sure that we have a policy in place, that people understand it, you're trained on it. So that's why I thought it's important for us to come back here now and discuss this. Councilwoman, do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
No, I'm curious what your motion will be, because I do believe it should be more than email.
Right, so here is my motion that I'd like to have, but please feel free to add change, and our attorney is here, we need to address it. So I'd like a motion, please, to direct the city attorney to research and draft a records retention policy for the council to consider.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'm starting.
A motion and a second. Any further comment? Further discussion?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm putting a peg in the wheel, but, should it just be email? Should it be electronic communications?
It, it's a total records retention, so, but, and so, council members, that's, it's inclusive, because it's a records retention motion.
Right, records are defined by statute to include anything, any document or electronic communication having to do with the city business, so by calling this records retention, it is inclusive of all records that involve city business, no matter the medium.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Done.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you, counselor. And thank you, council.
Madam Mayor, is, is the policy going to include ramifications if that does happen? Is it going to be a policy, is that going to include if an elected official or a city employee is no longer part of the city, part of the city employment, for lack of a better word? You know, how, how are you going to, how are you going to stop? You can have a policy, but if you do this, this is going to happen. You can end up across the street, I mean, you can't find someone who's already gone.
So I'm going to just make one short statement and then ask our counselor to jump in on that. I think that those are policies that fall under, in our human resource policies, and those may be addressed in different areas of policies that we have, so if there are issues with employees, those would fall separately. However, I'm not going to speak to the attorneys to research and what they come up with and where they're going to place these, so I'm going to ask our attorney to please, if you have anything to say.
There's something that we need to look into. There are, in many policies, there are consequences, but there are some things that are not actionable. For example, one elected official can't remove another elected official from the council just because they violate a policy. The only way to remove an official in the absence of a recall provision in a charter or state law is for them not to be reelected. Or, and the other option there is a censure motion, but you're never going to be able to remove them. So there are consequences, and we intend to include those in the policy, but some of them, you're never going to be able to achieve, even the event of a violation. So we just have to look into it and see what fits the circumstances.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, I'm just wondering, if you, is there no, is there, if there's no punishment, for lack of a better word, of ramification, why have a policy if there's no, if there's a violation, then, then why have it?
It's my understanding that that's not what was just said. It's my understanding that we will have policies that address issues that may be considered violations, that was an example that the counselor gave, but it doesn't necessarily, it might not be in this particular policy. Okay?
There will, there will be ramifications, but even if there were not ramifications or penalties, the policy would be good guidance for any of the follow, and remind all of the ground rules and expectations that the city has for their treatment of city records. So even if there were no penalties, let's call them, there would still be good reason to adopt such a policy.
Okay. Okay, next. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, councilman. Okay, next, thank you, councilman, thank you, councilman. Next item on the agenda is conflict of interest policy. So, as I've continually stated, you know, we are looking at policies since, you know, I came on and the council has been assisting and the staff has been assisting, definitely our controller has been assisting and our treasurer, and we're trying to make sure that we have best practices on all the policies we possibly can put in place. There were some queries in some communications regarding performance audits that were not done prior. It's not necessary to do performance audits. What's necessary right now is to look at each area and make sure that we have good policies for the department heads and the management and city manager in place. If there were queries about performance audits, they should have been looked at then, and now we're going forward and putting together what we need to move forward. We currently have a policy, sorry, a conflict of interest policy in place. However, it appears that over the years, possibly, they may not have been reviewed or looked at, and that's another issue. So, when we put these policies in place, we now want to make sure that they are reviewed and people follow them and they're trained on these policies. So, I believe that it's really important for us to put this policy in place, look at it, identify if there are any conflicts of interest, and stay on top of them because sometimes the policy may have a reason to allow something to happen or somebody to be recused. So, what I'm asking for right now is a motion to direct the city attorney to research and revise the city's conflict of interest policy for the council to consider. May I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second? A motion and a second. Comments? Ms. Brown?
So, I, I'm hoping that when this gets reviewed, that it's not just looking at direct conflicts of interest, but also, you know, indirect conflicts of interest. And what I mean by that is if you have somebody, for instance, that's seated on the council, who is employed by an organization that receives money from the council in order to sustain itself, and that's that person's bread and butter. It's not just about a vote that involves that organization, but it's a vote about any expenditures that are going on because that individual might be aware that there's a limited amount of funds to go around, and a vote in favor of somebody else might mean less money in the pot, and then your organization isn't going to fare so well. So, I think it really needs to be very specific and look at all angles of this situation because I suspect it's going to become quite pertinent in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Councilmember?
Is this the conflict of interest that goes into the personnel policy?
This is the conflict of interest that we have right now for the council in place, as well as what will go into the personnel policy. So, that's why I've asked for the attorneys to totally research and revise any of our conflict of interest policies. And once again, it's more complex, but we want to do it right. And we want to look at it, we want our lawyers to say, we should look at this, we shouldn't look at, this is okay. And so, I really want, this is the time we're actually giving our lawyers legal work to come in and put the city back in place. And that's really important in my mind, that we get these policies in place. So, when the, you know, city manager comes in, everybody's there, they can have proper training, and they can have the policies in place. So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is the personnel policy review, anticipated vote. Okay, so I'm going to ask now that may I have a motion to accept the personnel policies reviewed and updated by the city attorneys?
Madam Mayor, was this posted on line of the agenda?
Yes, personnel policy review number eight?
No, but I mean, was the document itself?
No. Okay, so may I have a motion to accept the personnel policies reviewed and updated by the city attorneys?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I think we should probably table this since, yeah, I mentioned that the conflict of interest may, it may change that in a personnel policy. And to be honest, there are some things in the personnel policy that really warranted further discretion, discussion among the council members.
Okay, so...
One thing, an example, fifteen paid holidays? That's a bit much. So, you know, let's take a little bit of time to digest it. I mean, it's been at the lawyers for how many months? And we've had it for just a couple few days? I think we're going to need more time to look at it, and if the city attorney needs to look at the conflict of interest and draft it, keep it in line with the city one, then that'll be better. But I would like to make a motion to table this until such time that we can have a completed policy. In other words, that the city attorney is through with their conflicts of interest and email, or records retentions, then we can have a finished, completed document.
So, can I make a friendly amendment to that? Okay, so all of the various policies won't be part of this, they will be unto themselves, but I don't want to take your friendly amendment to your tabling. So, I have, may I say, can we have a friendly amendment possibly to table this motion and discussion until the attorneys can look at this particular personnel policy again and see if any adjustments are needed for discussion with council? Would that work for you? And if so, it's your motion.
That's all. And I guess the date will, when we bring it up again, will depend on the attorneys because...
I just didn't want to confuse the other policies that are being done that don't go into this. I just wanted to keep it... So, it's up to you if you'd like to make a friendly amendment. Because it's your motion.
You've written that out, though?
I can tell you what I think I got down.
Do I like that?
I don't know, I'm sure you're going to tell me. I think you're, the most instant table this policy until the attorneys have looked at the policy, see if there's any adjustments that need to be made. That's what I got. I mean, I'll be exact.
My God, that's...
You good? So, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. Any comment? Further discussion?
I just want to say, I do appreciate the extra time just because this is a fairly hefty document, and the one that was handed to us tonight does have a couple minor changes and a couple more typos. Would I send that to you, or?
Oh, please do. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Madam Mayor, I hope the council has a good night, we'll see you.
Thank you very much, counselor. Thank you. Thank you, we got that, we got that? Mr. Treasurer, you got it now, right? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Newport City Elementary School presentation. Is Mr. Larson the principal here?
Yep.
Welcome. Before you descend, Mr. Larson, I do want to remind everybody that our rules when there's a presentation, there's no discussion or questions, the presentary... Thank you, go right ahead.
Great, and thank you, and thank you for having me, mayor and council members and residents of Newport City. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share with you a little bit about our school community and about our proposed budget for the 24-25 school year. I am Aaron Larson, I am the proud principal of Newport City Elementary School, home of the wolves. Each school day at Newport City, each school day at Newport City is the home to 303 of Newport City's children in grades pre-K through sixth grade. We are proud of our students and staff and how hard they work every day to educate our students, not just across academics, but in the social, emotional skills that they will need to be successful. Despite the high rates of students living in poverty, higher rates of students who need of extra support, such as special education, we maintain our focus on our school's mission to educate the whole child to become a caring, productive participant in the community. And that really is our focus. Last school year, when I came to talk to the council, we had taken on many large but necessary projects around the infrastructure of our school to maintain and improve our facilities, including a beautiful new playground structure that our kids only got the, just started to enjoy before the first snowfall came, but this spring, I'm sure they'll enjoy thoroughly. So, we've been able to really enjoy that, and those really took up a lot of expenses last year. This year, there are many factors that are working against us, and our budgetary focus has been more around the maintaining the integrity of our programming. There are many constraints on our school budgets this year. That means even with minimal increases to programming, a budgetary increase is still going to be necessary. Health insurance for all staff has gone up by 16.4%. These are changes that happen at the state level. These are not changes that are local decisions, they're not changes that administration or school board make. That's a significant increase as personnel is a majority of our costs. There are also changes for teacher and support staff, they're both receiving increases just up north of 5%. These increases are collectively bargained, and they're necessary in order to attract and retain high-quality educators for our students. We've also lost federal funding in terms of ESER and COVID relief money. These funds have been used and are necessary, they were necessary at the time, and we've been using those to really support our students and move programs forward. And now, with that cliff happening, and we've lost those funds, we are at a spot where we're having to spend, move some of those expenses into local budgets in order to maintain what we're currently providing our students. This year, the school is, and the school board and the administration are proposing a total budget of $8,217,575,000. This is an increase of $456,873, which is a 5.89% increase. This is the second lowest amongst the schools in our supervisory union, behind only our own junior high school. We also have other issues that happen, things that you can't plan for, such as a leaky roof that's leaking over our pre-K through third grade wing. This causes tremendous inconvenience and potentially unsafe, potentially an unsafe space for our students and staff. We have had engineers and roofers out, and the only way to resolve this issue is to replace the roof and the insulation and all the structures that are supporting it. This situation is not going to get any better by just waiting. The time to fix it is now. Our school district will be asking the voters to borrow up to $700,000 through a bond so we can fix our roof and make the necessary repairs so that our school is safe for our students and staff. Once those bids come in, we hope that the actual cost of the roof is significantly less than that, and we have reasons to believe, reasons to be hopeful that it will be less than that, but that's the amount that we're asking for in order to safely be able to make that repair. The school only has the ability to control our own spending. We don't have control over many other factors that may affect taxes. That being said, there are some pressures this year which are going to have a negative impact on taxpayers. The common level of appraisal for Newport City is around 80%. It should be at 100%. This means that our houses are selling at a value that is much greater than what they were appraised at, and this has a negative impact on taxes. Different committees within our state legislature are meeting currently and have been meeting ongoing. Usually, this is resolved by now, it's not this year. They are trying to hash out important factors such as spending caps, dollar yields, and possible other sources of revenue that may impact the tax rate. It's too early to predict what will happen, and it's too early to predict the timing of how and when it will happen. Therefore, I am unable to, at this time, to give you a prediction of how our budget will affect taxes. What I can share with you is that the board and administration have worked closely to strike the balance of providing resources to provide a quality education for our students while not dismissing our responsibility to the taxpayers of Newport City. We strongly encourage anyone who has an interest in the budget to attend an informational session on February 28th at 5:30 at the Newport City Elementary School Library. The Newport City Elementary School Board and the administration will be present and will be doing a presentation about the budget, and will be at that time able to field questions from the public. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you about our school and about the budget that we're bringing forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, it's February 28th?
February 28th at 5:30 at the school library.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Peter Costas' popular issue presentation, Samuel's Cry. This is a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the board, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Peter Costas, I'm the resident of Newport for the last 16 years. And in the interest of conserving time, I will just read verbatim from materials that I've already submitted to the board, or to the council, with no information, no new information being added, so with your indulgence. Submitted respectfully to the Newport City Council for its consideration is the following description of a drainage problem affecting four contiguous residential properties, a problem that I believe has resulted from the city's prior and ineffective efforts to direct and manage water runoff. It is my further belief that the city of Newport can and should apply a remedy to this problem. The problem: Throughout the 16 years that I have owned my property at 480 Seis Avenue, vast amounts of silt carried by water runoff have been and continue to be deposited on my property. At the time of purchase, my backyard was an unusable eyesore, completely and chronically saturated with water and silt that had nowhere to go. This condition led me in 2012 to install, at my expense exceeding $20,000 to date, a catch basin and an underground pipe 200 feet in length, leading from the new catch basin to and tying into the existing city-owned catch basin located at the corner of Seis Avenue and Paul Street. This city-permitted but privately funded project was done with the aim of getting the runoff a path to managably enter, traverse, and exit my property instead of continually and unmanageably filling it, which had previously been the case. instead of continually and unmanageably filling it, which had previously been the case. The project was mostly successful insofar as the runoff water was no longer filling my backyard, but it did not solve the problem of the silt. By 2015, the accumulating deposits had completely filled the ditch leading from my property line to the 2012-installed catch basin and had covered the basin's grate, blocking the flow of water into the grate and thus forcing the water, excuse me, the runoff, to bypass the entire system and once again fill my backyard with water and silt. This condition required immediate action, so again, at my expense, I had the ditch dug out and the grate uncovered to restore the flow. Since 2015, the ditch and catch basin grate have required continual maintenance to prevent flooding, but the rate at which they refill with silt exceeds a manageable level. Over time, despite my best efforts to prevent it, the underground pipe, not just the ditch and grate, will inevitably fill to the point where nothing flows through it. That dreaded result will render the entire system useless and will then require a total replacement. A permanent solution is clearly needed. The affected properties. Number one, 2 Holene Street, built in 1969, owned by Mark and Kimberly Lamott. Number two, 19 Holene Street, built in 1971, owned by Chris and Tracy Klemitz. Property number three, 63 Temple Street, built in 1964, owned by Chris and Jamie Royer. And property number four, 480 Seias Avenue, built in 1830, owned by myself. The source of the problem. The city installed culvert passing under 2 Holene Street and under Holene Street itself, designed to carry runoff from the large hill located west of Holene Street, which is known to many as the old Palin Farm area, is not performing as intended. Much of the runoff flows not through the pipe but around it, above ground, and has saturated the land of 2 Holene Street property. This has caused vast amounts of erosion resulting in silt being carried downstream onto and across the properties at 19 Holene, 63 Temple, and ultimately onto my property where it is deposited, causing harm. It is apparent also that the water flowing in an uncontrolled manner causes further erosion on 19 Holene Street and 63 Temple Street, the effect of which is to deposit even more silt onto my property. Steps taken so far. Number one, three of the four affected property owners, Mr. Lamott, Mr. Royer, and I conferred on the matter in the fall of 2023 and agreed that corrective action is necessary. Number two, I met with Newport City Public Works Director, Mr. Thomas Bernier, in the fall of 2023 to discuss the matter. Mr. Bernier told me that the city has no involvement in this problem and will take no steps to correct it. Mr. Bernier stated further his belief that the present runoff system was installed by the developer when the neighborhood went in, quote unquote. And with all due respect and with no doubts cast.
Please speak through me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And with no doubts cast or implied upon the integrity of Mr. Bernier or his office, there is reason to question the substance of that statement, however, because the four houses involved were not built at the same time. Indeed, their dates of construction span a period of 141 years. The neighborhood did not go in at once as suggested by Mr. Bernier, but rather was established over time. Number three, Mr. Lamott told me that shortly prior to my conversation with Mr. Bernier, city employees had responded to his request for action and had deposited crushstone in the area of the exit end of the culvert that traverses his property to no apparent effect or benefit to any of the properties, but with the effect of establishing a de facto city involvement that Mr. Bernier denied the existence of in his conversation with me. Proposed solution to the problem. Number one, replace the ineffective pipe that traverses the 2 Holene Street property to halt the erosion happening on that property. Number two, install effective runoff drainage on the three properties downstream of 2 Holene Street to halt erosion there and to ensure that water and only water is carried downstream. This could involve excavating the affected areas and rerouting the above-ground system or replacing the existing system with an additional underground pipe. As stated above, all three of the affected property owners who met in the fall of 2023 agree that corrective action is needed and that the city should bear responsibility for that action because the cause is city-created. So I thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I appreciate we've been allowing various citizens to come in and identify situations, and the city is going to be looking at these. The next item on the agenda is a request for amendment on the NBRC Award Causeway Project with an anticipated vote. I'd like to recognize Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As you know, we've had a construction project lined up on the Causeway that's actually going to replace three of the traffic signals there at East Main, at the access road to the interstate, and also at the Gardner Park Road. In addition to that, when we first wrote this application back in 2019, Tom had indicated that we really should upgrade the streetlights and replace conduit and get the traffic signals so that they were communicating with each other so it would improve traffic flow in that area. That work was designed. We put that to bid for the first time back in June of 2023. All of the bids were high, way high. We didn't have any alternatives to the bids, so all the bids were rejected by the city. We went back and redesigned the project with some bid alternates and rebid it again back in August of 2023. At that time, we only received one bid. The base bid, which was primarily just the replacement of the traffic signals alone, was about $876,000. The city at that time had indicated that they were of a mind to approve that project. There were some changes in the administration. We didn't get a contract signed. And at this point, the contractor who placed that bid back in August has indicated that they cannot finish the project within the timeframe of the grant that currently ends in September of 2024. So what we're proposing here is that we request an amendment for the Northern Border Regional Commission Grant, which is $250,000, asking that they amend the period of project performance to September 30th of 2025. What that will do is it will provide sufficient time for the base bid contractor, the contractor that would be awarded the contract for the streetlight replacement, excuse me, the traffic signal replacement, to order the lights, which have a considerably long lead time, and then still install them next year in order to meet and realize project completion date of September 30th, 2025. That would require NBRC approval. We're already at the maximum number of years for this project. So it would be, they would do to extend it for another year beyond the five years in order to allow us to proceed with the project. We had talked with the state liaison about that, and the state is supportive of that. So it really becomes up to NBRC in consultation with the state whether or not they're going to approve that. In addition to the base bid for the traffic signals, the way Tom has approached this project is that his crew would do the streetlight replacement and install the conduit. What that will do is it will increase the participation of the city, but it will reduce the overall cost because you will be incurring the labor costs that you already have through the Department of Public Works, equipment costs that you already have through Public Works, and then additional material costs that would be borne by the city as opposed to a contractor with a markup. So what we're proposing is the extension of the period of project performance until September, an adjustment of the budget, an adjustment of the city match, and for the mayor to be authorized to sign that documentation. So that's what we're here to present. I'm happy to try and answer questions. Tom knows a lot about this project and the need for it. I'm sure he responds to any questions that you have. And the gist of what we're asking for was put together in the formal resolution, which is in your council packet and also published on the website. And so that's what we're asking for.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion, and then we'll open it up for comment and discussion. So may I have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the amendment and any related documents on the NBRC Award Causeway Project? With a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Don't go away.
I don't know.
Any comments, Ms. Fairling?
May I ask a question?
Yes, yes.
Representative, okay. Do you have any indication as to whether or not they can push back on the request? I know the state's on board, but what about the interstate?
It's a good point, and we really don't yet. I did talk with, I talked with the state representative. She said that a lot of the, a lot of the way it goes with the state, that they look to the state to advise them. It really is at the, you know, they, when they make these awards, it's really, it's typically for three years. You can go to a maximum of five years. We're already at the fifth year, so this would be into a sixth year. Ordinarily, that would probably wouldn't even be considered. But because of COVID, many of the federal projects, federal grants, have allowed an additional time period. So we believe that it would be allowed. The state certainly feels it could be allowed, and that's why we're asking for that additional year. And had we gotten right after it and signed a contract shortly after that August bid, it was possible that we could have made the existing performance period or extended it by a little bit of time and not another year. But that just didn't happen for a number of reasons. It's a good question.
Any other comments or questions?
Just to follow up, do you have a backup plan if they say no?
No, that's great. Another good question.
Overtug?
No, I guess we really don't. I mean, I'm hoping that, and that's why I talked to the state first, that with the state being supportive, they recognize the need here. This ranked fairly highly when we put the application in at the beginning, that they're going to approve it. I suppose the city could always look at other alternatives where they could lose the grant award. There is another USDA grant that supports a part of the project, which is basically the traffic signals and not the streetlights. So you could move forward with that piece of the project. But that would really be the fallback. I mean, that if you lost that quarter of a million dollars, it would be a big, a big reduction in the project scope.
No, I'm sorry.
I don't know whether this is a question for Mr. Wells or Mr. Bernier.
Just talk through me.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. So I guess my question is, and I keep hearing this a lot, that the city employees are going to do work. City employees are going to do a lot of this stuff. I understand the whole idea of the length of time it takes to get the equipment that has to be ordered to put up. But do we have the city employees to make sure this and everything else they have to do that we're still trying to get done by the projected completion date?
Mr. Bernier? Do you want to address this?
Sure. I mean, it's certainly looking like we're not going to do that, this project this year. There is portions of it that we could do. Some of the conduit, some of the groundwork that would alleviate having everything fall into, you know, to next year. So yes, I feel we could, we can make this timeline.
And I think Tom's exactly right, that that's the way the phasing would work. If we can get the conduit in the ground in 2024, they've ordered the traffic signals, which will then come toward winter of '24-'25, and then do the streetlights and traffic signal installation in 2025. It will, it'll be over a two-year period.
Counselors, any questions, discussion? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Aye is have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you. We don't go away. We have Mr. Roy.
No, Madam Mayor, this is just the documents on the website. How can I get a copy of them if they're not?
I think.
They are. Everything I provide is on the website.
But we know to always have a copy.
Yep.
So one is the match, and that's you as well.
This one is.
You're authorized. Yep.
Thank you. Yes, you're here. Thank you very much. Oh, wait, we've got one more. Don't go away. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Everybody, nightfall.
Good night.
Okay. Okay, so here comes. Next item on the agenda is the Water Systems Improvements, Eastside Storage Tank and Booster Pump Station Contract Number Two, and Additional Alternate Number One with an anticipated vote, Mr. Booth.
Good evening. Jason Booth with Albridge Millions.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me this evening. So I'm here to discuss and present on our bid analysis and recommendation for the Eastside Water Storage Tank. Bids were open on this project on January 24th. And the city received three good competitive bids from contractors within the state. JPC Card was the apparent low bidder. They were the low bidder. Their base bid was $3,174,444. When updating the total project cost for this, that brings the total project cost for contract number two to four million, 106,000. And this is under budget and underestimate from the inception of the project. In total, for contract one and two, this not including the grant funding that was received from the ACCD. The project is about $480,000 under what the original bond capacity was, or, well, sorry, what the original bond code was. So all in all, good results from the bids. In the bid analysis and recommendation for award, what we typically do within this process with the low bidder, we contact their banking entities. We contact their bonding, and we contact references and review basically their standing and their financial capacity to take on a project like this of this size. JPC Card has checked out. We worked with them before. And they are local. Some of you may know them. And ultimately, our recommendations to the city is to award the project to JPC Card for the base bid of $3,174,444 and including Additional Alternate Number One, which is the active tank mixing system, in the amount of $45,000 even for a total contract award of $3,219,444.
May I have a motion that the Eastside Storage Tank and Booster Pump Station Contract Number Two be awarded to JPC Card of Barton, Vermont in the amount of $3,174,444 and Additional Alternate Number One, Active Tank Mixing System in the amount of $45,000 for a total. May I have the motion that the council approve the MERP Assessment Memorandum of Agreement as presented by the Vermont Department of Building and General Service, BGS?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor?
What? Stay, don't go away.
Who were the other bidders and what were their amounts?
Now, you have to be fast on your feet here. I will get you that.
If you, if you could, please, thank you.
Right, the other bidders, and they are now...
Oh, thank you.
Ah, there you go. See? There you go. Thank you.
No, but, well, the other bidders, this is just Albridge Millian.
Right, I'll get you that.
I think that might be included in that.
It's in the fact, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
But if you don't have it, just let me know.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the MERP Assessment, M-O-A, anticipated vote. May I have the motion that the council approve the MERP Assessment Memorandum of Agreement as presented by the Vermont Department of Building and General Service, BGS?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
A motion and a second. Any comment? Any discussion? Okay, this is basically so they can come in and see if we assess and we can get the money. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, the 2024 Parade Requests, anticipated, nope, whoops, sorry, take the... 2024 Coin Drops, okay? Anticipated vote. I just want to say that we have seven, that there are seven slots. We have eight, and with the agreement of the Rec. Department after discussing, we're going to be splitting some time between two so that everybody could get in there. So may I have a motion to approve the 2024 Coin Drops?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any comments?
Madam Mayor, who are they?
Oh, oop. Are we prepared? Any further discussion? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those post say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried.
I'm Becky sending the letters.
Right, Becky can charge the letters, okay. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the 2024 Parade Requests?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion is carried. Okay, there you go. Oh, sorry. Next item on the agenda is the Water and Wastewater Allocation Anticipated Vote. May I have a motion to approve the water and wastewater allocation as applied for by any pizza company, AKA Hokey's?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Comment? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries.
Madam Mayor, are they expanded or is this, do we have a...
Say it one more time.
Why are they applying, are they expanded or what?
Yes, they're going to be expanding and, and we have the capacity for this to happen.
Have what? I'm sorry?
Capacity, water capacity. Okay. This is me here? That will be me, huh? Want to make sure, I'm not, that he doesn't get anything. This is me too. I'm sorry.
My goal was, basically, I don't have that much people in here.
Oh, okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda, comments by members of the public. We're going to be opening the floor to public comment. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. Excuse me, city matter, city council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability in government but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council to conduct orderly and efficient meetings. I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting, and I thank you all. Okay, when your name is called, please identify yourself, your affiliation. You will have two minutes. You will be told when you have 30 seconds left.
Madam Mayor, can I make a statement before you get to it?
Yes.
Sorry.
Don't, don't... Yes, go ahead.
I'm going to make it nine, two minutes, but go ahead and talk. I'm going to respond to some comments that were made at the January 22nd meeting that I feel need a response. Comments by Ms. Barnes at the January 22nd meeting implying that some people receive special treatment from me or my staff is totally inaccurate. Implying that is one thing, but questioning me or my staff's integrity is another matter. Especially in fact, do not back up statements made in public. I do not take lightly attempts to diminish me, my staff, or our office. Ms. Barnes stated that on May 15, 2013, during a pre-meeting small talk, former Mayor Manette shared a funny story about being late paying his taxes and allegedly being personally called by me to remind him to pay his taxes. This is not accurate. I'll just say that according to Marion Webster, a funny story is an amusing anecdote which may or may not be completely factual. The funny story may have been what Mr. Manette had intended. The questions are asked, is it the job of the city clerk and treasurer to personally call people regarding issues like this? We do call citizens to answer questions they may have on any number of issues, including taxes, and they request a return call or email. The treasurer's office does not call to remind people to pay their taxes. That is their responsibility. I am quite sure taxes have been mentioned in many ways, in many, many conversations over the years, since taxes are a large part of what we do downstairs. Every taxpayer in Newport should know when the taxes are due, as is clearly printed on the tax bills along with info regarding penalty and interest. If not, it could potentially be a problem. I'll repeat, our office does not contact taxpayers to remind them to pay their taxes or utilities. Second question, who was the delinquent tax collector in 2017, 2018? The city manager was the delinquent tax collector in 2017, 18. Why did former Mayor Manette receive a personal call? Former Mayor Manette did not receive a call on his past due taxes in November 2017, and he was properly charged 1% interest for November, December, January, and February. Let me reiterate a little bit. If the first installment is not paid by the November due date, it becomes past due. A 1% interest per month is charged after due date until the November installment is paid. If taxes are not paid in full by the May due date, they become delinquent. An 8% penalty and a 1% interest is charged per month until the unpaid balance in the May payment is paid in full. It doesn't matter if it's $10,000 or $10. The 8% penalty and 1% interest apply. Due to circumstances, Ms. Barnes was late on the May 15 installment. She did not receive a call because we do not initiate calls regarding taxes or utilities. The council was asked to investigate. I'll just say that my office flippantly adheres to Vermont law. We work closely with the mayor and council. We provide support and information to them when asked. We are one of two elected entities in the city of Newport working together. That's what we call check and balances. We run our office in a professional manner. We should know with no preference to any person or persons. We treat all residents of Newport respectfully and legally. The clerk treasurer's office is highly regarded by the vast majority of Newport residents. That's my statement.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Clerk Treasurer. So, Ms. Beerling, ready?
I am. I haven't timed this, so I'm, I'm hoping that I'm going to hit the timeline. I would ask for a little grace if I don't.
So, can we kind of have this one? Do you want comments back?
I'll read, I'll read fast. Jennifer Beerling, resident of Newport, Vermont. At the January 22nd council meeting, Pam Lads made a statement wherein she stated, and I'm paraphrasing to a slight extent to provide the context, what I really find disturbing is that I bet the ex-mayor, Paul Manette, Woody Page, our state representative, and Melissa Peterson, all knew that the city manager had never been bonded and allowed this circus to go on and on. I would ask Ms. Lads why she believes that a state representative would have internal municipal documents which would confirm or deny the bonding of our city manager. Ms. Lads' assertion that Representative Page has such documents, in my opinion, demonstrates a breakdown in rational thought. Further, I find Ms. Lads targeting of the former mayor and only one councilwoman telling. Mr. Wilson has been on the council for decades and would have known that the city manager wasn't bonded, so according to Ms. Lads, he allowed the circus to go on and on. Mr. Pronto was mayor for four years. He would have known that the city manager was not bonded, so according to Ms. Lads, he allowed the circus to go on and on. Our current mayor was in office for nearly six months before she requested a resolution to set a bond for the city manager at $500,000. And in a recent word from the mayor article written by Ms. Sullivan, she stated that she actually tried to return a bond security deposit from Ms. Dolgan and discovered at that time that she had not been bonded, so therefore she had knowledge that the, the city manager was not bonded. Ms. Lads' selective assignment of guilt, in my opinion, was delivered purely for political gain, namely to defame those that she identifies as opponents of the mayor. Ms. Lads, you can't have your cake and eat it too. If one or two of them were guilty of malfeasance, then they all were, including Mr. Wilson, Mr. Pronto, and Ms. Sullivan alike. I will state again on the record that I don't believe any of them were guilty of malfeasance. I believe they were simply misinformed, believing that the crime and fidelity insurance satisfied the charter's requirement when it does not. I would add that there are additional city officials that the charter does require to be bonded, namely the treasurer clerk, the constable, the tax collector, and the superintendent of streets and waterworks, and hence I do suspect that the council needs to address those as well.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello, I'm Stacy Tearing, Assistant Clerk Treasurer. I'm aware of a recent article published in the Newport Daily titled "More Mismanagement of City Dollars." However, I want to clarify that the views expressed in that article do not represent our office or how we conduct business. We adhere to all local, state, and federal laws and operate with integrity. All transactions are verifiable and are within the scope of the law. We take an oath that states in part, "I will, therein, do equal right and justice to all men, to the best of our ability, our judgment, according to law." We take this oath very seriously, and I, I have the utmost confidence in the clerk treasurer's office. I assure that the transactions that we process are accurate, accurate, and lawful. We take pride in our professionalism, our impartiality, and are committed to serving all 4,455 citizens of this town. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. This one?
I believe I already addressed the issue of the integrity of our record keeping previously, and I won't, I won't waste any time at this point.
Thank you. Anything else to add? Okay. So, Donna Constodino, Newport.
I'm going to let that slide when you need to, because I know you tried to do this the last time. Yeah, literally. So I have had some preliminary conversations with the Agency on Aging and Rick Uparche in the past about senior ballroom dancing, because it has cognitive abilities to help with cognitive decline, and I haven't gotten in touch with the Agency on Aging yet, but I wanted to ask people, do you know the name of the woman who moved to Newport who's a ballroom dancer from Texas? Teresa, what's her name?
Howren, Tiffany Howren. I can give you her contact.
Tiffany, okay, that'd be great. The reason I ask is I may, I may be accepting a proposal with a friend to buy some real estate in a different part of the state, and if I do decide to do this, I would be moving. And so I would kind of want to bring people together and, you know, package this so that it could continue. And if I don't move, I'd be glad to continue trying to bring people together to actualize this potential. So I've been getting positive feedback from people that I speak to, so that's just one thing. And the other thing was just a comment, and I just wanted to thank you both for, you know, serving, and you're going to be leaving at some point soon, and there's...
Well, maybe not. Maybe one of you is still with me.
Oh, okay. So I, I don't know all of that, but just thank, who was leaving, thank you. But my comment is just about basically assuming good intentions. I just, want to just sort of address the elephant in the room. No matter what our opinions are, I just wish everyone would assume good intentions and have more civility and more welcomingness to other people's opinions so that we can move forward together as a community, and just assume good intentions and not just have innuendos and rumors or conspiracies in search of a target. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just in case anybody... And just in case anybody doesn't know, she can do it. So, next item on the agenda. New business. President Wilson? Councilman Charbonneau?
None.
Councilman Vashon?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yeah, I got a couple things. Need approval for a vendor's permit for Old Crate. I guess they, they want a permit for, it's pretty early, July, June eighth at the farmer's market from nine AM to four PM. They've got all the insurance, the photographs, fees, everything is all. I need a motion for that.
Okay.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Comments, discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
So the second thing I need approval for, liquor permit and tobacco permits for, AGS, which is the market, Vista Market, Walgreens, and Jimmy Quick. All second-class light and smoking tobacco. So I need a motion for a permit for Old Crate.
May I have a motion?
Or lumping them all together?
Mm-hmm.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. No questions? Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the both say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
That's it for me.
Stacy, anything? So, I would like to say that I'm pleased to announce that I have been working with the LCT, and we're going to be organizing training, so we'll be specific to council, leadership department head, city manager, and other related city trainings, and we're not going to do that until the election happens. So, you know, we don't want to do it now. We want to wait till new council people and new city manager and everybody's in place. I also want to announce that the city has entered into a Vermont grant agreement for fifty-five thousand, nine twenty-three, and seventy-one cents for a special fund award for the development of the city of Newport Downtown's master plan. So that's good. Also want you to know that the zoning administration, administrator and others have been working on taxed map software, getting them updated. And I want to thank everybody because these are hard topics. And I really, you know, bring out your opinions. We will address, as the treasurer did. If somebody makes a statement, we'll look into it. Bonding, whatever it was, we try to address it and go forward and keep the discussions coming. But I thank you for being civil. We can disagree, but thank you for that. I do want you to know that the mayor, appropriate department heads and officials have been taking a deep dive into the city's financials and the water sewer and tax rate structure. It was recently brought to our attention that there have been some cash flow issues and losses over the years and without identifying very specific solutions and best practices. So a deep review of the current situation based on the water meters as they were originally approved and the situation as it occurs today, and its effect on the cash flow of the city currently, how that will continue if the meter program continues through two thousand and twenty-nine, what needs to be addressed. We are looking at that. I've identified from recently identified information that there is a need to identify the financial situation of the city. We need to get accurate information timely to the appropriate leadership so that discussions can take place on the various options of whether there's flat rates, continued meter structure, and so on, and how best to put the city in a healthy financial condition by being equitable to all. So as we receive more information and as the questions are continued to develop, we will be placing this on an agenda item within the next few weeks for full discussion and findings and comments and further, and looking further into it. And I just wanted to be sure that everybody was aware that we are looking at that. Next item on the agenda is old business. President Wilson?
None.
Councilman Charbonneau?
None.
Councilman Vashon?
No, thank you.
Councilman Curtis?
No, thanks.
Mr. Treasury? Taryn? Okay, here we go. Okay, so in the Capella litigation, in keeping with the ethics and responsibilities for appropriate disclosure and maintaining of emails and documents and other evidence in matters of litigation, the city's attorney on this matter has provided for the turnover of documents as required timely by the discovery schedule. And depositions in this matter are anticipated to continue as the schedule has been identified. Both council members, Vashon and Curtis, are now confirmed bonded beginning March one, two thousand and twenty-four. Okay. In accordance with the council vote. I want to wish good luck to all of the people out there, candidates, every single one of you who are running. Thank you for stepping up to offer your service. Really, thank you. You're courageous. It really takes a lot, and it's tough out there, but I appreciate that. So, next item on the agenda is to set the next meeting. The regularly scheduled council meeting for February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Comments? Yes?
Is, will we also be having a meeting the night before the council meeting? Is that, I know we're not ready to schedule that, but I just thought of it.
It, yeah, we're not ready to, yes. That's, yeah, we have to have that. We have to have that ready. So yes, we will, but this is the one we're scheduling. It's okay. Okay. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is carried.
Madam Mayor, before German, isn't there a meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, special meeting. Yes. Next item on the agenda is adjourn. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting at eight thirty? I know. That's because he just. Adjourn the regular meeting, Capella, at eight thirty-five PM. I have the motion. Do I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Post say nay. Ayes have it, motion is carried. Have a safe drive.